For being down here, the last few times I think we've had a better discussion in this format than you do up in the chamber. And again, the ability to listen and ask questions is always a valuable thing. So with that, Dr. Joseph, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
This is actually our, the final budget meeting, I believe, in this whole long process. I don't know if they do this more easily in Maryland than they do it here.
Not really.
Okay. All right. That makes us feel better. That makes us feel better. But thank you, and thank all three representatives from MMPS to be here today. And again, again, our point here, we're definitely going to be out of here by 6:00. Your part of this will be a lot quicker. Everybody feel free to just be direct and ask and answer questions, and then we'll try to move on. No disrespect, but want to be sensitive to everybody's time. Thank you.
Thank you.
And does this work? And so if, and I don't know if you had anything that you wanted to bring to our attentions to the start. There clearly, if you're looking for some things we'd like comment on, the school nurses, I think, is very much in the front of everybody's mind at this table about how to find funding for it, and it's their utility and value to the school system and to the county.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you all for having us here once again. And to address the school nurses, you know, we recognize that we have lots of students with great needs within the district, and we believe by investing in our school nurses, we will have the capacity to better serve our students. So we were asking for in three, to phase in to have over 100, to have 100 nurses over three years. This year, to phase in 13 more nurses within to our, the school system at a cost of about $917,000. You know, the nurses focus on students' medical plans. Right now, we have one nurse serving three to four schools, and we want to be able to reduce that ratio as we, as we move towards it. You know, our goal is after three years to get very close to the standard of one nurse for every 750 students. We're off that right now. You know, it's an excellent partnership that we have with the, our Public Health Office here, so supporting us to support the nurses would do, go a great way to make sure, you know, our students are getting the services that they need. If I can just answer any questions that you have specifically.
Yeah. Well, shall we start down on this side? Council lady?
Thank you. So when I think of going to a school nurse, I think of typical low-grade kind of illnesses, you know, basic fever, maybe, I just scratched. Maybe something that wouldn't be, I guess, a high-ranking nurse. So what level of education do these nurses have to be?
And that's really more of a question for the Health Department, but we, since we already have them, they, they are actual RNs in most cases, where they currently, as Dr. Joseph indicated, with the number that we have, they're providing services to students on medical plans. But they would also be available if we were to increase the number for those kinds of things that you, that you mentioned that could be more lower-grade in nature, but they would be available to, to help students with those kinds of ailments, whether it be a fever, whether it be a cough, in addition to continuing to provide the services to our medically fragile students.
And what is that, what are we paying them now? What's their salary on average?
Around $70,000.
Yeah. It's, it's through the Metro Public Health Department. We have a contract with the Health Department, and so they actually pay them, and then we pay the, the Health Department based upon the services that, that, that we need and based upon our budget.
Have we looked at doing anything to, I don't know, intern with some of the, you know, Vanderbilt and Harry and this or that?
Public health that's here, I don't know if they want to address some of those questions.
Do you want to just come sit down?
Yeah, sure.
Have we ever looked at doing some kind of a partnership with any of our hospitals or Harry to, you know, have, to kind of save money? Because $70,000 obviously is a lot of money, and I was just trying to save some money and then ask.
There was until recently, you guys can correct me, I believe there was, there were two nurses that were paid for by Vanderbilt as I think sort of a way to get practice for, for them. That has ended, as I understand. So right now, that is not the case. They are, they're not full-time employees. They're .71 FTEs. They work during the school year. We would not object to that. I couldn't, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the, the first part. The proposal at this point is to move towards the one per 750 over a period of time, as was proposed in a, one of the public investment plans that was, that was recommended by the mayor, although the funding was at the time originally was included in the school board's budget, and it was not, and so that's where we are.
And one other question is about their salaries. Could you speak to that?
Uh, I, I don't know exactly what they are, frankly. I know the contract now is, I want to say it's about four something million dollars a year, I believe, for sixty some odd.
But that also includes supervisors, et cetera?
It does, right. So I, I'm sorry, I can get that number certainly, but I don't have it off the top of my head.
It comes in at $70,230. And how much do you think that's with Vinnie's and everything?
Yeah, I'm sure it would be.
It's similar to a teacher salary, salary plus benefits, similar, similar to a teacher position.
I think if they were serving 750 students, or I guess one per school, we should say, how busy really would they be? I mean, they would have to be there all day long. How busy are they? And can we use them in the school for something else? I don't know what, but can we use them for something else if, you know, they're not busy?
So. I'd say nurse, nurses are typically busy, depending on the size of the school and the communities that they serve. I mean, they, the firm, again, doing physical, students always come in with some type of ailment or issues, and then they can be very proactive. I mean, they, lots of school systems nurses, through the nurses office, you get the, you know, hearing screenings and the, the visual checks and so forth, but it's a constantly busy place, and they, they keep a roll sheet. We can probably capture data and communicate data on, on average, how often, you know, how many visits our school nurses get, but typically, it's, it's a busy, busy place.
Okay.
But this is, this is something we should emphasize, because currently nurses are stretched so thin that they're only able to address students' medical plans. And so a student who just is coming in because they have a cold and feels like they need to go home, they go home instead of being able to be seen by a school nurse now. And so if we had an adequate number of school nurses to keep the kids in the school, then we can do a better job of educating them. And we serve the city with vulnerable students, as y'all well know, and so this is a vital way that we'd be able to help keep the kids in schools healthier and on task.
And I will say, you know, both the student and staff absenteeism is, is very high, and we feel having, having a nurse in, in the buildings can, can address that. I mean, but that's one of the targeted goals for our strategic plan this year, really, you know, aggressively going after student absenteeism.
Thank you.
Thank you, council lady. I saw, Councilman Bettany, did you?
No.
Okay. All right. Coming down this, this side? Anybody? Okay. Councilman Glover?
Well, I'm not going to be popular on what I'm going to say. While I agree that nurses should be there, I, I do believe it's the board's responsibility to prioritize and determine where the money's going to go. I think if it's that important, it is probably more important to do that than it is to pull people out and bring them back into central office in some of the positions that you're doing. Again, that's my opinion, because I've seen it in the past on pulling the people and moving them back into middle, middle management positions. I don't know exactly what you're paying for that. And again, it's not really, it's not our responsibility, because we give you the money and you, you spend it the way that you guys see fit. But while I agree that it would be nice to have the nurses, I'm also sitting here looking at the commitments that basically the city's already made over the next year in the budget, and I think right now I'm coming up with about $71 million. If you're talking about rolling this out to 100 nurses over a three-year period, that's about a $7 million price tag. And so now we're, we're up to $74, $75 million next year before we really even start and before we finish this budget. So if it's, if it's critical to me, I think the board needs to sit back down and figure out what the true priorities are. And if it is a true priority, then I think, you know, because if we come in and we give them money for it, we don't have, we don't have assurances. Now, I know you guys will say, yeah, we're going to do it, and you will, but we really don't have assurances down the road that, that's going to end up happening year in, year out. And so that's my concern with it, and again, I just, I always talk pretty direct on what I think and what I believe. And so that's my major concern, and I would like, you know, if the board feels it's that, it's that high of a priority, I'd like for them to go back and crunch the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Council Lady Weiner, did you have a question?
Yes. How hard is it to attract school nurses and keep them?
I don't know the answer to that question, definitely. We, they, they are staffed, pretty much fully staffed. There are five or six that are, that are basically there for filling in when somebody's ill or can't be there for whatever reason. So, I mean, some people prefer a part-time job, they like getting on the school calendar, others wouldn't. I don't know that it's particularly difficult. I mean, we have issues all the time with that sort of thing. I don't know it is particularly difficult.
But Council Lady, to your point, I think that that's part of why they divided up into three years. Originally, you know, originally the plan was to do it all in the first year, but because of exactly what you're saying, how difficult it can be, make sure that we want to get the very best teachers, excuse me, nurses, that's why it was divided up into three years. And so we're looking for 13 instead of 40 at one time.
And then, like Council Lady Blaylock, in that it makes sense to explore a relationship with our area nursing schools to see if there's some way, because I know in audiology, when we're getting our doctors, we have to have clock hours, and we have to have the opportunity to go into clinic. And I know when my daughter went to nursing school, she did the same. So maybe there's an opportunity there to capitalize on some of that local need.
Any? Thank you. Councilman Davis?
Hey, thank you for being here today. I think it's great that we're in the middle of the discussion with school nurses, and I'm glad to see that it's a priority to put nurses in our, some of our most, you know, schools that we have to pray about a little bit more than others, and I appreciate that. But is there a way to make the burden a little easier to cover by partnering with Metro General? I know you do a lot with the Health Department, but I don't know, and I'm not a doctor or a nurse, so, you know, is there a way that they, if we, let's say, if we say, hey, could Health Department provide three or five or whatever number of nurses, or can Metro General supplement out? Because I know, I'm not sure, but most kids, at least are supposed to have some sort of free health insurance or something, you know, while they're enrolled in school, and maybe if General provides nurses, maybe they can build the health insurance, you know, or I'm just thinking, because, you know, I'm always, our county hospital needs more, you know, patients with insurance, and maybe if they have a nurse that comes to the school every, every two weeks or every week, or however, or even it's staff there, you know, maybe that's a way that we could help General at the same time provide the services that your students need.
So, Councilman, we do have some work from General Hospital, if he could help answer that question too. Can let me invite you out to, to add, add to the discussion.
Just have a seat. You can sit.
Yeah, sure. So it was a little, I was having the same problem time-wise. I was hearing sort of bits and pieces. Can you just give me the question?
Basically, you know, you have nurses, and, you know, I hope that I'm correct, that most of the children that attend our metro schools have some sort of insurance. You know, most of it should be free, you know, and you need more clients that can, that you can bill their insurance, and you don't charge copays to a lot of folks. So since the kids, you know, are kids, they don't have any money, and, you know, and you have nurses, and they need nurses, maybe there's a way that the Health Department, you and the schools can partner to kind of help save some money, but also provide the funding that the kid, that the, the health services the kids need. And also bring some resources into your hospital.
Sure. So our nurse leadership could also provide supervision, and I know Dr. Joseph has a great relationship with Dr. Webb, so, and also with Dr. Paul, so, I mean, I'm happy to sort of run that up the chain. Okay. All right. Any, any other question? Yes, Councilman Bettany?
How would that work? So the child, if he gets hurt in the school, do they have to show the insurance card?
Well, most, I'm not sure, but I know, you know, you have a kid in grade school also. I just, I know that they're required, or at least they used to be, I mean, she's been there before Dr. Joseph came in. I know it was required that all kids, or at least my daughter, had health insurance, you know, and we had to show that, you know, she had health insurance. And when they have it, you know, it's easier, you know, even if it's, you know, whatever it is, for General to bill, because lots of times, you know, which we know our county hospital doesn't turn people away, and most of our clients that come in there don't have insurance. But they're helping our kids, and the kids have insurance, which I, I'm not 100% sure. And if you, any fine gentleman can help me, I think there's a policy that covers the kids, I'm not sure. You know, are metro students provided health insurance, free health insurance?
Councilman, I believe you're thinking about TINcare.
TINcare.
Covers our most vulnerable, you know, some of our most vulnerable students.
Yeah.
But doesn't cover all our students. Chairman, if I may.
Please.
I think what I, the common theme I hear from council members is they want us to partner with outside agencies and our other partners in the communities. We hear that loud and clear. That's why we partner with other Health Departments for exactly the same reasons that you are bringing up. And I think you're encouraging us to look beyond just the Health Department, see if there's other ways of building synergy around this.
Okay.
We agree, and help bury the diverse needs.
Thank you. Other council questions? I know, Councilman Glover?
I think you can just answer, because Chris, if I remember correctly, that was one of the things that we worked on when I was on the board, to make sure we were billing for, for the TINcare Medicaid where we could. We did institute that. Am I remembering that correctly?
That's what we did, the Medicaid reimbursement?
Yes.
It took a while for the state to allow that to happen because of the uniqueness of TINcare, but we have started doing that recently, within the last year or so with a consulting firm. And so we have started to see some of that come in finally, which that was a long journey, as you remember.
Yes. Is there any other option? Is there availability for students who have private insurance? Is there even an option if it's maintenance, if, like with insulin, with, with any type of maintenance medication that they're doing? I mean, is there even an option that, that insurance can be billed for, for services rendered?
I'm not sure of direct services that can be.
My gut tells me no, but I, I mean, I think it'd be worth exploring on that as well.
I think Tennessee is so unique with TINcare. It's not like other states that where the school districts receive pretty hefty reimbursements. You know, we're always willing to look into possibilities.
Other council questions? I have a quick question that's useful for me going into the weekend. School nurses would be the school system's number-one wishlist item. I just wanted to confirm that. And then what would be number two? If there is a number two? I mean, is it all on number one, that this is the one thing that we can do that's materially helpful?
Number two, I think number two would be the additional support for social-emotional learning with the, you know, the restorative justice and restorative practices within our, within our buildings. You know, we've been working hard to implement restorative practices in, in our, you know, original budget proposal. We had talked about adding additional professional development for staff, and now that we've moved into a quadrant model, we were looking at two additional coaches that could provide direct support to schools and be in schools full-time, providing that support to counselors and teachers for the social-emotional support.
Okay. But school nurses, if you had one, one ask?
It'd be school nurses.
That's the ask that you would make of a council?
Yeah.
Okay. That's, that's very, thank you for directly answering that. Any other question from council members? Yes, Vice Chair?
Dr. Joseph, can you, can you stand upon the, the social-emotional learning, like how all that ties into, like, what guidance counselors are? I'm not, I'm not in that arena, and I'm
Sure.
I'm sure many of my colleagues don't understand how all that connects. For me, in my mind, I'm saying if we have guidance counselors, right, why do we need an additional support system when we already have counselors?
Right. Because like nurses, our guidance counselors are overwhelmed. They have many more students to supervise, and they are, as a result, they're handling a lot of the, we don't, they don't, they can't do as much counseling and support directly to students as we would like. And when I came in, one of the first things we did was require principals to make sure counselors were freed of the administrative duties that they had had to ensure that they could provide direct supports. We've got lots of students that come in and demonstrate behavioral challenges, and teachers need support in knowing how to work with those students within classrooms, because we need to, you know, keep our kids in class so they can learn. But we've got to make sure that when students are in class, they're not disrupting the learning of other students. And how we discipline students. One of the biggest challenges we have in the district is the disproportionate suspension, particularly of African-American, Latino students, students with disabilities. And we need to provide training and support to teachers to work with those students.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Any further questions? Again, thank you for being here. It's useful to know what your number-one priority is, and
Thank you.
Again, it's, appreciate the dialogue between us and MMPS. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Joseph. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
For the audience.
And then our next segment is, is our codes. Thank you very much for being here. So thank you very much for being here. Again, trying to have a discussion. I think we kept you kind of late a few weeks ago at the council chamber.
It's quite all right.
This may be easier to, to ask questions around. Codes was clearly a very high priority on the sort of council wishlist, and a couple of aspects of the questions, again, I know everybody here all have questions. One aspect of it, though, is fee increases to pay for codes, and the requirement of having a study really before you can raise, that codes in effect should pay for itself and to do a study. And so part of, when you come around to me, my question is, what, how long does it take to do a study? What needs to be part of that study? What's the funding level required for that study, and what do we need to get out, out of that? But again, it's a strong interest of, of everyone on the council, and with that, let's ask people with questions. We've been starting down on the left here, council ladies.
I mean, happy to ask. I know a lot of our colleagues have made some requests, and we see in the budget positions related to property standards, but did not see reflected their requests for zoning examiners. And so, you know, there's kind of a variety, I think, colleagues of various combinations of property standards and examiners, and I'm kind of trying to think about what's, what's the best combination to help you all meet your needs, and so can you speak to that, the need for zoning examiners, please?
I can't. Specifically, we pointed out a need for two additional zoning examiners. And zoning examiners are your first point of contact when you come to the codes department to apply for a permit or to ask a question about a property, or what can I do, you know, does the zoning code allow this or allow that? And it's, it's, I don't know if I want to say it's overwhelming at this point, but there are lots of things we wish we were doing that we're not doing, that we should be doing, like returning phone calls, responding to emails, spending more time with citizens and applicants, discussing the complexities of, of the zoning code. As you know, it's quite complex, and there aren't easy answers to what most people think are simple questions. I'm reminded of when Council Lady Murphy asked me one day, what's the rear setback requirement in R-20 zoning? And the answer is, I have no idea. It depends on where it is, it depends on what kind of street it's on, it depends on what your proposal to do at the rear of the property, depends on whether there's any kind of overlay involved. So there are a dozen different variables to any question. So every question is a research project. These two positions would aid us in serving the public and serving permit applicants. The, the truth is, a lot of that, a lot of those questions got answered by Brandon when he was at the front desk at the zoning, the planning department, and Brandon now works for you. And most of those questions fell to the codes department when he joined the council staff.
See, I have a follow-on question.
Oh, yes, please. Yeah, we're over here.
Okay. I guess, I mean, can you speak to the wait in development services, I mean, zoning examiners have now, you know, how, how that's running? I have a sense sometimes in engaging there, that with all due respect, that, you know, there's some things that are slipping through the cracks at that zoning examiner level, and I think that's just because of the, the volume of what they're dealing with and the pressure that they're under. So can you speak on the wait time there, and, you know, what, when your examiners are working with someone, how that's process is working based on current staffing?
Yes. The, currently staffed at six zoning examiners. The sixth one is a new position. We, we had added in the prior year's budget. We began to, a process to fill that position, only to have someone retire and had to fill it again. So we're constantly working towards keeping our employment levels up, but today we have five examiners and one in training, one recent hire, who we would not turn loose with the general public or the applicants. He's pretty much in training at this point, or she's in training.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Well, I guess just your, your wait time, I had asked in development services, if somebody needs to be
Yeah, and it's, they're serving right now an average of 65 customers a day. An average of 20 minutes is spent with each customer. We average four and a half zoning examiners per day to serve those customers, and the zoning examiner's spending 4.8 hours per day serving those customers in the Q-list system who have signed in to be seen. The balance of their time, roughly three hours, is spent on e-permits, web permits, dropping off plans, applications for multiple permits. One applicant may, one applicant may bring you 20 permit applications, and you have to get it set up, and then you cookie cutter 19 more after you do the first one. Meanwhile, the, the public is waiting out in the front room for their turn. And then after our walk-in customers, some folks come in late, board is owning appeal applications, and returning their phone calls and responding to emails, and it's the phone calls and the emails that typically, typically get shorted.
Thank you. Coming down this side of the table, Councilman Bettany? Chairman Allen?
Yeah, I want to go back to the, the wait time. The way I understand that works, I mean, we had been shown some screenshots that showed, like, five-hour wait time, but that's not, you have to sit here for five hours. It's, you sign in online and then it tells you to come five hours later. Can you sort of explain how that process works?
Correct. The software is good, our customers like it, the Q-list system. Prior to just signing in on a clipboard, sitting down in our lobby and waiting for an unknown amount of time, the Q-list system lets you sign in electronically and gives you, tells you where you are in line and about how long you're going to be in line. Now, the time they're giving you is inaccurate, okay? That's, that's a known. Most of our customers will tell us if it says four hours, you can plan on two. So the, the reason, and I've been trying to dig down into, why does it give you an inaccurate number if we've got a, a system that's supposed to be able to do that, and it's, it's not the software, it's the way we use it? Because we allow customers to request a particular zoning examiner, and we have zoning examiners who are assigned a specialty, as in Clint Harper is assigned to short-term rental properties. Everybody can't keep up with every iteration Everybody can't keep up with every iteration of that, but Clint can. So he is the go-to expert within the group. So they'll come in and they'll sign in and they can request a particular applicant, which means when their name is called, if Clint is not the one calling them up, they're going to continue to wait. So it distorts the software. And the result is, it gives you a fairly wild number for the estimated wait time. You know your place in line, that's accurate. The wait time is inaccurate. But what it also does is periodically send you text messages giving you updates. And it'll give you a text message warning that your name is about to be called. You're 10 minutes or 20 minutes out. So it's much more predictable. You still have to wait, you just don't have to wait at the codes department.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Lady. Around the table, Councilman Clover.
Okay, so the $828,000, was that originally requested in the budget that you asked the mayor for?
Yes.
Okay, and it was how many positions? Nine? Was it nine positions?
Nine.
Okay, of those two would be zoning inspectors, would be put into the zoning?
It'd be, there was two zoning examiners, one plans examiner, and then a group of trade inspectors, two electrical, two mechanical, and two plumbing.
Okay, all right. So that request was originally motioned, right? If we are able to fund this, and I think Chairman Corrigan, I think you said that that's a high priority for all of us.
So they got that. They got the state property standards guys.
The suggestion was made of possibly a little bit higher fees. I think if you had a $15 million, the city could have been making fees for high enough. If this was a private operation, and we were generating that kind of money, we were making people wait as long as they're having to, then we'd go out of business. And so I think we need to prioritize and give the money here and the staffing to where the people are not having to wait. Because I know you guys are overwhelmed. I mean, I come down there too, I see the lines and everything else. So I hope that we do make it a priority, you know, because I think that's probably the number one complaint. I don't want to speak on everybody's behalf, that's the number one complaint I get. And so I certainly think, from my standpoint, it is a major priority in the zoning piece of it as well, the zoning examiners. So if you get this, do you feel confident that the efficiency in the office will increase drastically? And then, so I'll let you answer that question, and then I want to come back to the short-term rentals very quickly.
Yeah, I think the efficiency will improve dramatically, drastically. I'm not sure what's the right term. But I would also say that with the addition of all that we've talked about, we're still a pretty lean operation in comparison with any other major city you want to compare us to. You might find that we're staffed at about 50% or maybe less of what other staffs would typically be. So we try to keep it lean, we try to keep it on the efficient side. And it's reflected in, if you look at our revenues this year, about $21.5 million in revenues, primarily from permit fees, 21.5 million. And I think our budget this year was 8.8 million. We're going to come in with a surplus of 12.6 million over the cost of operations.
Sorry, I was thinking of around 15, but that's, but still, that's a nice surplus that I think the city's receiving. All right, the second question, the other complaints, not in my district, but I see the emails from various other districts on the STRPs, the Friday night parties, the Saturday night parties. The one thing that disturbed me is when I asked, where was it in the budget on that software? Nobody was able to tell me until, I think it was Zach, Zach came over and says, no, no, it was over here. That bothered me a little bit, that why your finance department didn't know where that money was. Where are we in the process on that? And what exactly is that going to accomplish as we try to haggle out the STRPs on where we try to land or where the state says we're going to land, or however this is going to end up working out? Where are we with that? And by exercising this, where will the efficiency happen there on stopping the Friday nights, the Saturday nights, the neighbors, and the bad apple category of that arena?
Okay, well, all of the consultants' recommendations were recommended by the mayor. They're part of her recommended budget to the council. As far as the question on the amount for the software consulting, that's on me. I stumbled on that question when you asked it at the budget hearing, but the finance department knew exactly where it was, okay? And it's in the capital budget, not the operating budget. And I believe it's going to come from, I believe it's coming from 4% funds, but it's on that side, not the operating side of the budget. The status of that, coincidentally, is we put out an RFP. We had several people submit, and it was evaluated by a committee. There was a vendor selected, the one selected was host compliance, the one that we originally presented to you back in February, I believe. They were found to present the best solution by the evaluation committee. There was a protest filed, the protest was heard, and they filed an appeal, and the appeal was heard, and the purchasing agent was upheld. So as of yesterday, we were cleared to enter into the contract with host compliance. That's a big part of the short-term rental property solution.
How long will it take to implement? Now that it's been awarded, how long will it take us to be up and operational with that?
I read through their proposal on the RFP, and it, there's a schedule in there, and I believe it's within one week, there's some of signing the contract, there are a few deliverables. And we share information with them, they share information with us. Within two to three weeks, they're giving us lists of non-complying properties. Somewhere in the four to six-week range, it's at full operation.
So then, before the summer is out, we're going to have a good sampling? So I'm talking about our highest tourist visitation time, we're going to have a pretty good sampling of what the software can do then?
Correct. And they're going to assist us by sending out notice letters, the department's notice letters. The initial boilerplate letter would be sent out on our letterhead, on our behalf, by our consultant. And it would promptly get underway.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Thank you. Council members, any further questions? Yes, Councilman Davis? Oh, Mina? I'm sorry, didn't see your hand.
Thank you, Director Cobb. On your original, I'm kind of late getting into the real number. So on your original proposal, I think, let's see, increase trade inspectors. So you're asking 669,900. And then your budget was allocated to 74,000. Could you tell me about that, your proposal and 74,000? I think you asked was 669,900, but you are rewarded 74,000. You asked for 10 FTE, but you were rewarded 1 FTE.
I'm not following you. Is there a budget page you're looking at?
Yes.
Is there a page number?
Maybe not only a big budget. I've got this coming from Department of Commerce Administration to increase in trade inspector.
Yes.
And you asked for 10 FTE, and...
Oh, okay. Are you on page G33-3?
She's actually on a budget modification.
Yeah, I'm on a budget modification.
It's not in there.
Yeah.
But the question was, during the hearings with the mayor, you asked for, they asked about any modifications in the budget, and you requested 10 trade inspectors to be added. That was the request.
Right. Okay, so let me ask you another question.
No, I requested six trades inspectors.
Okay, so in other words, you got what you all requested, because another one is, oh, let's see, you request six, six FTE.
That was...
And budget is 876,300. And you've got all six, as you asked.
That was property standards.
That's property, six property standards inspectors.
Right. But what I'm asking is, it says trade inspectors, but that's the word. It was plumbing, mechanics.
Correct.
So that's the one you have not got.
That's what we're asking for.
Right.
They were not included in the mayor's recommended budget.
Right. So that include zoning examiner and so forth?
Correct.
Yes.
So you said wait time is improved due to software and text message and so forth. And on your end, you tried to improve how to serve customer.
Correct.
And I think you will see, seeing a little result. But could you tell me how many of your zoning examiner is getting close to retirement age or may take early retirement if they have a chance?
We have two zoning examiners, senior-level type examiners that have been with us for quite a few years. One has probably been with the department 35 years, the other's been with the department 28 years. And they could retire, you know, at any time. I'm not sure, one of them still, even though he's been there 35 years, I'm not sure his age is quite where it needs to be. But sometime in the next couple of years, I would expect to lose them both and to retirement. And that's going to create quite a gap for us. So we do need to get new people up to speed as quickly as we can.
So going back to your original statement, because setback in R-20 is as easy as it used to, because depending on the location, depending on the policy, depending on which street and so forth. So by losing those institutional knowledge in 28 years, 30 years, and replacing somebody young, how long will it take for those new examiner to come up to the speed?
Well, we believe it takes us at least six months just to get a newly hired zoning examiner up to speed where they can wait on the next customer in line. They can field and begin the process about any type of permit application or question. And recognize when they're over their head so that they get it to a person who can assist. Obviously, we have a chief zoning examiner, we have a zoning administrator, we have some senior-level people that can assist in the more difficult questions. But six months to 12 months to get pretty good at what you're doing, to get to the level of the two that might be retiring, it'll probably take two or three years to get them to be proficient at that level.
Sure. And so in your department, you have zoning examiner and also property standard inspector. So zoning examiners are the one bringing the revenue. So by having additional examiner, maybe be able to review the plan a little bit quicker or provide better customer service, maybe your level of service will increase dramatically?
Correct. Yes.
Thank you. And another thing I would like to ask is, I think, short-term rental or property standards, you know, because we are a complaint-driven department. But sometimes, you know, if your inspector works only 9 to 5, you may not be able to really catch the actual complaint. Is there any, like, shift for the property standard inspector?
And I'll go back to the recommendations from the consultants. Were to employ a software or a consultant that could assist by giving us a 24/7 hotline, and that's in the contract. So there would be a 24/7 hotline that any neighbor to a short-term rental property could contact. And the operator answering the phone, a human voice would answer the phone and respond and look up that particular property. If it is permitted to short-term rental, they would immediately then contact the owner of that property and give that owner 30 minutes to correct the issue. And then they would contact the person who called in the complaint to see if it had been taken care of. The other thing the consultant had recommended is that we look at having property standards inspectors who are on call, not assigned shifts. They specifically recommended against that, but recommended that we have someone on call. Similar to how we handle emergency electrical reconnect permits, we have an electrical inspector on call 365 days of the year and responds after hours if there's a thunderstorm that knocks out power or a, you know, an automobile runs through a bank building, those types of calamities, we've got somebody available that they can speak with and coordinate that with NES and the contractors.
So those, after-hours person, on-call person is, by assigning some special person will be available without assigning extra FTE?
Yeah, that's our intent.
Okay, great. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Davis?
Thank you for coming, gentlemen. Um, a question. I feel, and this is my personal opinion, but if you could look at, I think we need to raise the fees. I know we may not be able to raise the fees for the BZA submissions, because I know that you have two senior employees that are spending a lot of their time, you know, and I think you guys recently had your first 10 o'clock a night, and you have to deal with BZA and that a lot. It's quite unusual, but because of the amount of work. So, A, can we increase the fees for submitting an application for the BZA? And then, two, can we increase the permit fees?
I would, regarding fees, we haven't raised them in quite a few years, 10 or 12 years. We currently are collecting more than the cost of the service. So I think if you bring a consultant in to look at it, they're going to recommend a decrease in the fees that are being charged, because the service doesn't come anywhere close to approaching that level. So we haven't asked. I think that the fees can be adjusted by the council. You've got the full right to do that. You set the fees and you can reduce them. We've always gone through a process of bringing a consultant in, comparing our fees to the cost for full-cost recovery. State law clearly allows us to recover 100% of our cost. And we compare our fees to jurisdictions around us to make sure we're in balance in our middle Tennessee area, and that our fees are consistent with the fees charged by other major cities, our peer cities, those places like Charlotte and Austin and Louisville and Birmingham, Tampa, Florida. And so we do that type of evaluation, and then we look at a number of different types of permits. So it's not just, you know, it's how much is a permit fee? Well, it depends on what you're wanting to bill. There's residential fees and commercial fees and how the schedule is created and plan review fees. And we take a good, long look at that and generally follow the consultant's recommendations. That would be the process I would recommend, again, if the council wants to pursue that.
Well, I'm, you know, personally, and it may or may not be the right thing to do, but I feel if we can raise the fees, we can fund more, help you fund more inspectors and help, you know... help you fund more inspectors and help, you know, alleviate some of the burden and provide a better customer service. You know, of course, I want to help you get your new crop coming in this budget, you know, but I want to make sure that we can fund other things in the future instead of attacking Joe taxpayers' pockets. But, and I wouldn't really want to hire a consultant because I feel that instead of paying them to study this, we could have them study something else. But if we were going to raise a B Z A fee fifteen bucks or twenty-five bucks to help cover the cost of an additional inspector or an electrical examiner, you know, I feel that's just a win-win because then the developers and the people remodeling don't have to keep waiting. Because I think Doug Cleves might be close to retirement. I know Doug does a lot of those. Oh, he's already gone?
He's retired already.
Yeah, two weeks ago.
So you definitely need another mechanical inspector soon.
Absolutely. In the process of hiring the replacement.
So Mike, we can raise, the council can choose to raise the fees?
Council can raise fees, but it has to be based on the actual costs. And Mr. Cobb said is actually one hundred percent right that they're entitled to collect one hundred percent of the cost, but not a hundred and one. Anything above the actual cost is deemed a tax. We don't have that for you.
Yeah, but when we made the fees, you know, your staff won't stay in there until ten o'clock at night, you know, listening to short-term permit rentals and party houses and things like that. So even though the employees are great, you know, their salary, so they'll stay until midnight. But I'm sure, you know, it's, you know, taking a toll on them a little bit, probably. They're just probably just too nice to mention it.
Thank you, councilman. Any following questions by council members? Vice Chair?
So, um, from my notes from the hearing in the chamber, I have property standards staggering. I don't know if that was a note to myself to ask you or if you mentioned that in the hearing as it relates to what we're having, the issues in the neighborhoods, is we have neighbors that violate after operating hours of property standards inspectors. So they're never able to catch the offender parking on the grass in the evening or parking in the grass on the weekend. And I have a note about staggering part-time and weekend. I don't know if we discussed that or if that was my little note to myself to suggest.
Yeah, we talked about that some in the budget hearing. And I'd said that the consultants who came in, and their specific recommendation was that we not staff at nights and weekends. And staggering, where they overlap a little bit, they talked about, well, maybe we could have some staggered shifts where they work till, you know, seven o'clock or eight o'clock or something like that. And that didn't get in late evening or wee hours of the morning. But then you've got to deal with rush hour traffic. And I know if I'm, if I hear about something going on out in Antioch and I leave the office at rush hour, it may take me an hour or more to get there. Yeah. I know, I drove from the health department to Donaldson one day, and I was, it was incredible to me, an hour and forty-five minutes, you know, just to drive home. So, and I live seven miles from my office, so...
So what would be, what would be the solution? Because if I, if I, if a neighbor reports another neighbor parking on the grass and they work all day, they work from eight to five, and they're only violating from five until five P M. until they go to work the next day, it becomes an endless cycle of reporting. Because when the property inspector go out, they don't see anyone parking on the grass, so they closed the case.
Correct.
So property owner comes home again. Neighbor reports them again. It just becomes an endless cycle, and it's not efficient for our property standards.
And we have...
We keep going through this vicious, it's just a continuing cycle.
We do have inspectors that go out nights and weekends.
But you have to request them. I'm told you have to request them, the flex team or whoever again.
Yeah, any council member makes a request of us to do that. We get it on the list, and we do go out and make inspections at night and on weekends. That is correct. I don't give people that permanent assignment in hours, but we do get out there to follow up on those things, those repeat-type violations.
So is the flex team solely for evenings and weekends?
No, the flex team, all of our inspectors are assigned by geographic territory. They're assigned to a geographical area, and they take complaints in that geographical area, and they work proactively in that geographical area. The, the other thing they do with the flex team is we assign them specific projects, not a geographical area. So if we want to do an audit in a particular area of town, we want to get additional manpower, the flex team is going to handle it. Just like the flex team at the police department handles getting additional manpower to an area or to an assignment. If we want to look at all of the signs on all of the thoroughfares in the county, we'll turn that over to our flex team. And they'll go door-to-door, street-by-street, from downtown to the county line and back and do sign code enforcement. And they may be on that project for several weeks. That type of assignment is what we have them do.
So if the flex team, Director Cobb, if the flex team, if their project for the county is on signage, right, they're tied up with signage. We still have this void of evening violators and weekend violators that's not being addressed while our flex team is tied up doing the project for signage.
No, we do signs, but that's just one project we do.
I was just using that as an example to illustrate the gap in service.
Out of any given year, that probably represents three to six weeks of their time. But we have rental inspection districts where the council has mapped out certain areas of the county for us to examine door-to-door, street-by-street. And the flex team is given that assignment, so...
I was told y'all don't do that anymore.
Well, we do audits, and we've done audits for you, council lady.
I know about the audits, let's talk about the rental inspection districts.
Yeah, but we do, the rental inspection districts really need to be looked at again. I think, I think this, I would suggest that we look at mapping number of complaints, crime statistics, age of housing stock. We go back to the nexus that we had looked at for mapping the original rental inspection districts. But the nations isn't the same neighborhood that it was ten years ago, okay? Germantown and Salem Town aren't the same neighborhood they were ten or fifteen years ago. So we need to look and find out where our hot zones are. And I think we've got a pretty good idea of where they are.
You're talking to one.
Yeah, I know. Your district is, does have one or more. And we need to redirect those flex team assets to those areas. But the consultants' report actually recommended that we eliminate the flex team and merge them back into the geographical assignments and work proactive, more proactively within the assigned geographical districts. So we've got some decisions to make along those lines.
So would it be beneficial for us to consider a part-time weekend property standards? I'm asking for your expertise. I mean, it's your shot.
I would not recommend it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Council Lady Byler?
A constituent calls in to make a complaint, do they, people receiving the phone call, do they ever ask them, is this only at night as far as parking on the grass or things that typically are just a nighttime complaint? Do they, are they educated enough to ask that question and then, you know, give that assigned to a potential flex team or somebody that could go out on a night again?
I don't know the answer. I would think so, but I don't know it for a fact.
And how about our online complaint, the new system? Is there a box to check for a nighttime inspection?
Don't know that either.
No. The answer is no.
And I just wanted to say I like the flex team, so if you don't get rid of that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Byler. And you may have somewhat just answered. What I was going to ask you is with the new software, if you have recurring incidents of parking on the grass or whatever the violation happens to be, and it's occurring in the evening when you can't get somebody from downtown to Antioch or downtown to Hermitage or Bellevue or wherever it happens to be, is there the opportunity for an individual to take a picture of that where it's clearly identifiable to that piece of property and upload it to the software where you've got some, where you have a trail of evidence?
Yes, but it'd be a photo of the problem. We get a lot of photos, but that doesn't represent evidence that could be admitted in court as evidence should we prosecute.
That's why I'm asking the question. Please.
Just an update, and some folks that have been working even more diligently on the new HOB program can correct me if I'm incorrect. But I know that we're rolling out Public Works first and trying to get that underway and visually into the codes. But at some point, I would say in the next three years, I guess would be a reasonable estimate, there will be a mobile opportunity to be able, whenever you see a problem, you take a picture, it'll geotag it, and it'll go to the proper department. Anybody that's online will be able to see whether or not it's already been reported or not and what phase it's in as to the response and what's next. And I think that, to me, that's been the one, the number-one thing is that I know it's that darn due process, right? It's like, at what, at what point are we in the complaint? And if we can figure out a way to make the constituent be able to have access to that information, I think it will reduce quite a bit of the headache that we're experiencing now.
And I believe the codes department is probably next in line to be, to work on the HOB.
That's right. That's how I understand it. So I think we'll be, we'll see that happen next year and then probably the mobile application in the following year. Things always take longer than what I had one.
So clarify that for the viewing audience to make sure that they don't think that this is happening.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be another two or three years, but we are absolutely in the process and...
Yeah, we're trying to discuss the issue.
Three to five.
We'll hear more about that as it's available.
Thank you, Council Lady, Councilman?
Yeah, I, when we started thinking about the code school, I spent time meeting with the environmental court judge because, and this is something I want to bring to your attention. I mean, there's so much we can ask codes to do. If we don't have also the environmental court judge and the rest of the system working together, then we hit a wall. So just like he was saying, the picture is not evidence. I mean, the judge is the person that decides how to enforce that, what is reported by the guys that are working at code. So maybe we should at some point have a meeting and bring everybody that really makes the system work around the table and figure out how to do this. We passed the legislation about the code school, and a year later, I got a call about implementing. So the idea is that we may have the best ideas, but if they are not going to be implemented, they may not do what we intend to do. So, you know that we really count on you, but also understand that you are part of a bigger system. I want to take this opportunity to thank you for answering my letter. I have been, I had got calls from other council members asking me to translate. Like Kenny Johnson once calls me, it's like, I have this person here has this code problem. Can you please tell them, educate this person about this code issue? So I ended up being the de facto translator for the council members. And I'm asking that, and I appreciate you are eager to hire inspectors that are from the different communities so we can really do that work of educating people on what the rules are and how to be good neighbors. So I appreciate you making that commitment.
Thank you. Any other, yes?
One more, Director Cobb. Have we turned off the voicemail? I mean, y'all don't return the calls. I would rather, if a constituent call, they get a fast busy as opposed to leaving a voicemail and they never receive a follow-up. Can we just turn off the voicemail and let it...
Are you asking if we can?
Yes, or have you?
The voicemail is alive and well.
Okay. But no one's returning the calls.
Okay. Let me know who's not returning.
Okay.
Any further questions? I had a quick question for you as to the, you were talking about the consultant. Your estimated cost and the time that it would take to do a consultant study would be what in terms of preparation to any kind of fee increase?
For a fee increase, I would, we've done it a couple of times in my tenure with Metro, and my recollection is it takes three to six months to do it, and it costs fifty to sixty thousand.
Yeah, but this was, this was back in two thousand nine, I believe. It was about fifty-five thousand then. It took about four and a half, five months.
And that was the last time that fees were increased?
It was two thousand three and in two thousand nine, I believe, or ten, whatever.
Both based on similar studies?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions?
I might add that typically, the fee studies typically take place when the economy is at the bottom and fees are low, and we're concerned that they will, the revenues will dip below the cost of operations. And the result is times improve and revenues go out through the roof, and our cost of operations stays pretty constant, so...
And right now, he's collecting more.
And it will happen again.
It will happen again. Thank you, Director. I appreciate it. No further questions here. Appreciate you being here and we're grateful for your time.
Did you ask him about what his priority would be in the scheme?
Oh, well, would you ask? One quick question from the Vice Chairman?
Yeah. This is my last question. So in prioritizing, to help us prioritize the wish list, Director Cobb, can you express which would be your top priority that you didn't get in the recommendation?
I think our highest priority, if I could, if I could, number one would be the mechanical inspectors, and number two would be the electrical inspectors because these are public safety issues that we're talking about. We're talking about giving a gas mechanical inspector five minutes on a job site instead of fifteen to twenty that he really needs. Or an electrical inspector gets five minutes to look at an electrical system that's pretty complex instead of a half hour or a couple of hours that he really needs. So the staffing there needs to be addressed. Plumbing would be probably third. But those, the trades inspectors would be my highest priority.
Okay, thank you, Councilman.
Let me just say, Director, while I appreciate it, I think all the positions you expressed, with the zones, the zoning piece, those two positions, from the complaints I hear, I think, let me just emphasize, I think those are high priorities. And so simply from a time standpoint, so I hope those are included in that as well. So, thank you, Chair.
Okay. Thank you. And again, thank you, thank you for the last question. All right, I appreciate everybody being here. We are going to try to keep to a schedule. And the next phase of the meeting is the wish, sort of the wish list discussion. Thank you, Director. I appreciate everybody being here. And there are results from our kind of survey of council members on the wish list. And as we go through the highest-ranked items that were on the wish list, please, let's talk about them as we come into the weekend. The DA salary equalization received the most, the most points. There is a complexity in the DA's salary.
Did you, yeah?
Yes.
Thank you, Chair.
And we have our umpire here.
Thank you very much.
We have our umpire here. And it was decisively the highest item. The DA salaries increase has a complexity to it. By state law, the... By state law, the public defenders have to receive 75% of the amount of money that you are, are giving to the DA's office. So it, it adds to a complexity and to be addressed. But again, as, with limited resources, as we come down our priorities, I wanted again to, to, yes, Councilman, I see your puzzle.
Will you clarify the 75%? So is it based upon what they get today, or is it new money that they would receive?
Well, and I've been asked by Channel 3, Ms. Talia and Zach, if you all would come up so that they, in terms of your answer, you could be on the, on the audio. Our wonderful Finance Director has been working hard on this issue today.
Chair.
Oh, yes.
Is there a way we could get a list of the rankings? Do you have them available?
Of the rankings? Well, we're, we'll, we'll just, we'll go over it as they could come up, but it's, it was decisively in the lead for the DA salaries. And we'll go through the, the next seven, and then the others are kind of clumped together without any decisive scoring advantage. But again, just to address the number one on DA salaries, thank you, Director.
Yeah. I'm not the lawyer in the room, but I've been educated on this requirement. There is a state law and an accompanying Tennessee Attorney General opinion, which says, it basically says, any increase in appropriations for the DA, and that includes salary and office expenses, has to be accompanied by at least a, an amount equal to 75% of that appropriation for the public defender's office. And it does not describe what that money needs to be used for, but it does require that you provide that funding to them. So if you gave the DA $100,000, then you would need to give the public defender $75,000.
So it makes more expensive whatever funding you ultimately give to the, to the DA's office.
And, and I've shared that, yeah, I don't know if Mike Jamison wants to jump in, but I've shared that with him as well in terms of the, I would just like for him to concur his understanding of that.
It's a one-sentence statute. It says exactly that. There are four Attorney General opinions on it. Only one is really specific to our situation and makes it clear that it's mandatory. The only out that that AG opinion offers is that simply because you've allocated the funds to the public defender does not mean they need to spend them, but that doesn't help you on the allocation side.
So let me just run that through. Quick here. So the DA in the upcoming budget was $8,913,000, and the public defender is $8,287, so it's 93%. So where are we running into, where's the 75% coming into play?
Because it has to do with the increase in the budget. And what has happened in the past, we have provided additional funding to the public defender, so we are above that threshold, but we still have to make that minimum requirement regarding that 75% for any improvements.
So Mr. Jamison?
Yes, sir.
If we're already funding it at a 93% level, basically.
It's just about new money, isn't it?
It's about new money.
Yes, it doesn't matter what you've been giving. Yeah, I'm not the lawyer. I'm not here to.
Which means.
So if they want 700,000, we're going to have to give 1.2, 2.5 million.
So given that, there are a couple of options to talk, to talk over in this group. One is, can we do it all in one year? Does it need to be over two years? And then secondly, if you're funding the public defender's office, there is probably a, they're very worthy, there is also possibly a use, since it doesn't have to be spent there, to fund a public defender J-Fond PIP with some of that 75% that would have to roll over in fact, doing immigration and outreach and defense outreach through this mechanism, which will, by law, really be, seems like it's required for us to do as we, as we fund this number one priority. Again, I want to bring this up for general discussion. I know Chairman Allen had a, had her hand up. Yes, ma'am.
My, my memory is that the whole reason this came up is because the public defenders got raises and the DA's did not, and so they're behind. And this was just asking to level the playing field. And so I guess my question would be, from a legal, legal perspective, does that increase?
Doesn't matter.
I mean, the fact that they got an increase last year, does it count? Does that, does it say per year in the same year? Does it say it has to be simultaneously?
Any increase in local funding positions or office expenses for the district attorney general shall be accompanied by an increase in funding of 75% of the increase in funding to the office of public defender.
And so the public defender happened last year. I mean, what does accompany mean? Did they specifically say in the same year? Is there a definition for a company that thinks it had to be absolutely?
The way it's been construed.
Constructed by Attorney General.
By the Attorney General.
Have they ever asked the question of if we did it ahead of time, does that count? Has that question ever been answered? Do we, do we dare wait and let the Attorney General answer that question? No?
Will we add some, Councilman?
You're saying you're talking about additional 525,000 dollars?
Yes.
If, if you were to fund, if you were to fund the whole thing.
On top of the 760.
Correct.
Yes.
About another 530, so.
So again, for, for this discussion, and I'm listening to every word, there are strategies for maybe not doing the whole thing and for trying to have some of the public defenders' money have another very worthy community use. And yes, Councilman Cholman.
I guess the question is, have we had any, have we had discussions with the public defender's office? I mean, we know what the statute says, we know what we're trying to do. We can, if we don't have the money to do the whole thing, we may have to do part of it. But I guess the question is, have we dealt with the public defender's office to make sure that if we appropriate money to them, that we actually know what they're going to do with it?
Well, I know both our Finance Director and our Council has been in touch with them today as this issue really showed up, I guess, in focus just, just yesterday.
Well, I'm sure they're. I'm sure they're pleased to know that we're looking at this now. But the question is, obviously, there wasn't, I don't think there was anything on the wishlist for them. If we're going to take care of the DA's, if we follow the state law?
Well, well, sort of, in, in this group of other things, was this idea, there was on the wishlist of, again, immigration outreach and legal defense for immigrants. So that, that would, that would fit to some degree if we were in effect obligated to fund public defense money. And then again, the defender's office and J-Fond has a PIP before. I don't think it was necessarily included in the administration's PIP list, but it would be an opportunity to increase the funding of PIP, of that PIP program. And again, that was pretty well thought out and, and well planned in, in the mayor's program.
Would, in order to fund the PIP program, would, would that require full, the full 900,000, or would we do it kind of in segments and do?
Well, the PIP funding would count against the public defender's amount, I believe.
But are we?
Fund the PIP was $150,000. So I guess he's suggesting to use that to partially offset any requirement that you may have to fund the public defender.
No. No. But, oh, Councilman.
Yeah, yeah.
It, it helps me to get a historical perspective on things. Was it against state law last year when they raised the?
No.
It looks like the district attorney's office increased. When we increased the district attorney's office, then we have to give the money also to the public defender. I think last year.
So I'm, I'm trying to figure out, why did that happen? Why was it in reverse and all of the money that was given to the public defender's office was given?
Right.
Yeah, please.
I can answer that. They, they ended up with a larger amount of money because of the pay plan recommendations. So when the pay plan recommendations came in, they did make those recommendations to increase those salaries for those staff. So they received a larger share of the pay plan allocation dollars, which increased their percent as compared to the DA.
So did they realize when they made that recommendation that it was going to skew it?
No, no one was really looking at it from that perspective because it was just a pay plan issue.
Oh, that, that concerns me. I mean, because you have to look at it all. You have to look at the impact and not just make it a decision on one end without realizing what the impact is going to be on the other end, because that's why we're at this particular place. Also, I, I do think that if we don't have the funds, that we should do it incrementally to, especially to those who are more seasoned than others, those who's been, without that fund.
Right. Well, again, I defer to the Director and Mr. Jamison. I think if you give the money to the district attorney's office, we're not really able to craft who it would go to other than general salary increase. It's a great question.
That is correct. As an elected official, he would have that discretion.
He or the public defender.
I think his question was, would the DA be able to decide how to spread that? And the answer to that is yes.
Does it go to our experienced attorneys or is it a recruitment, a recruitment tool for newer attorneys? Thank you. Chairman? Go ahead, Chairman.
I, I think fundamentally, we all want to, to support the DA's office, but given that the dynamics are what they are, this just opens up a much larger conversation that this is really, it needs to be driven on the state level. It's the state law that's really causing the inequity. I mean, we can do something to, to minimize it short term, but at the end of the day, it's still going to be that inequity in the salaries there between the public defender's office and the DA's office, because he's going to continue to hire. We won't be able to keep pace with, with the new hires that he's going to get if we're going to do it incrementally. Yeah.
Council Lady.
The inequity was supposed to be addressed by the fact, in an ideal world, we would have raised the salaries of the DA's and thus correspondingly had to raise the salaries of the public defender. The law was set up in such a way, but apparently, this city did it backwards.
Because usually in cities, they raise the DA salaries more than the PD were.
Just why the state law. Right. So where, last year in the process of understanding that, you know, it was happening in the context of the pay plan, but, I mean, from a pure city perspective, from a DA's office, public defender's office, I mean, recognizing in other cities or other municipalities, they generally raised the DA's office salaries first and correspondingly then subsequently raised those for public defenders. I mean, we have put ourselves in a pickle here.
I think I can take part of that question. And part of, part of the issue here is that the public defenders are Metro employees. Most of the DA's are not. They are considered state employees, so what this turns into is a state, is a Metro supplement to the state salary. So that's why you don't have those individuals showing up on the Metro side in terms of calculating a pay adjustment, because they're technically state employees and we provide supplements.
So this is a problem unique to a city-county consolidated government, right?
So I wanted to acquaint everybody with this, Councilman.
So Talia, let me ask a quick question.
Can you help?
When you're talking about, when you're talking about the difference between these DA employees and the public defender's office employees, and the public defender's office employees are Metro employees?
And the DA does have some Metro employees, but the majority of their ADAs are state, are state, and they get supplements.
Okay, so that, therein lies my, my basic question is, what percentage of those that are state employees, what percentage are being supplemented by Metro? To what dollar figure? To what percentage of their salaries get supplemented by us?
And we, we only have what the Metro share would be, so if you wanted to know what that, what they're making on the state side, you'd have to request that from General Fong, because we don't have access to the state information.
Okay. Well, thank you, everybody. I wanted to acquaint them with this complexity. It's, again, a number one item. There's some complexity to it. Please share with me your views offline. It's been a privilege to work with Finance and trying to fashion a fair and balanced solution. If you don't mind, let's go on to the next big item on the wishlist, which is school nurses. And again, we heard from Dr. Joseph, that's clearly MMPS's big, single greatest priority for that. And so I'm, I'm assuming that we're, open it up for discussion to, to have that as our big, second most valued. Yes, Councilman?
What's the interesting twist in this?
Well, there is no interesting twist in this, other than that, it's, other than that, it's a three-year, it's a three-year rollout, and there'll be an increasing cost. I think the comments that I've heard is, you know, we're, we're kind of doing it separate from MMPS's budget, but again, they are technically going to be working for the Health Department. So it was always a slightly gray area of direct employees or direct reports into MMPS. But again, we're open for discussion, again, as we work with the administration to craft a wishlist for all of us, just making sure that this is our big, this is our big second, second most important item. Yes, Councilman?
Well, I, I'm just going to, again, because I've sat over there as, as Council Lady Johnson, we've sat over there, I don't disagree that it's necessarily needed. I do disagree with their reinstating some of the positions they're doing back in central office, because we did it when we were there, and it didn't, I'm not going to say it won't work now, but it didn't work then. And so if you're doing that, and historically, when you go through these budgets on the school board, every year, they're going to do the same things we do. You've got to sit down and lay the priority list out. And so if we do this, and even though it may be a three-year rollout plan, if we're not able to accommodate the additional $7 million in this three-year plan, then ultimately what's going to happen is that those positions are going to go away anyway. I mean, it's just, it's the way it works. And so I guess from my standpoint, the, the increase they, they got was pretty substantial, I think, was it the second largest of any department? Yeah. And so with, with that being said, I, I know it's hard to make those decisions. We've sat over there. I, I get how hard it is to do that, but that's what their job is. Our job is just to give them a dollar amount. And so really, what we're doing here, I think, is almost exactly what they tell us don't do, is they're telling us, don't tell us what to do line items on, yet we're sitting right here doing a line item. And so from my standpoint, again, I know I'm not going to be popular when I say this. It's not a standpoint of not believing that they're needed. I absolutely believe they're needed, but philosophically, I have a problem when we're getting into line items with the school board, because we're told over and over and over, and we'll be told again next year, by the way, don't get into line items with us.
Thank you, Councilman. I wanted to correct something I said earlier. Share with me later offline, actually, share with me here. Actually, that's why we're all here, is to share together our thoughts about this. Thank you, Councilman. Council Lady Weiner, did you have a comment?
Basically, all I can say is these are our kids, and at some point, we have to roll this out, and we have to take a stand on what we believe is a priority. If we decide that that is a priority within the purview of the Health Department, and then the school board decides that they're going to contract with the Health Department as they have, then we move forward with it. If we decide that it makes more sense to stick to our guns and not give them the extra money, but still encourage the school board to adopt the school nurses, then that's, you've got two sides to this. But at the end of the day, these are our kids, and they deserve.
Thank you. Council Lady Johnson.
Thank you, Chair. I, I have to agree with Councilman Glover on this one, because I think that we have missed the mark in terms of expressing how very important this item is. When the school board was going through their budget, we as council members, what I have seen that we have lacked is being there while they're making those decisions before they send the budget to us at the council. When I was on the school board, that was something I always expressed. If it's something that's really important to council members, and even though we don't have line item authority, I think what we do have is we have presence, power, whereas if we showed up at the time that they're making those decisions on what they would like to spend the money on when they come to us with their request, then I think we're in a better position to see this funded. So with that, I have to agree, I don't think this is going to go anywhere. I don't think this is going to go anywhere. Ultimately, they're going to go away, but I think what we can do is correct this for the next budget and be there at the table with the school board members.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Mendez?
I've really got a process question for either, I think, Mr. Jameson or Talia. So because of what Councilwoman Glover talked about, about not being able to talk about line items, if we give them the amount of money that it would take to pay for the nurses, are they under any obligation to use it for nurses?
Well, I'll defer to Councilwoman Taya. I mean, oh, is there a legal responsibility for MMPS to participate in the nurses program, other than they were here saying that they would?
Yeah, that's what I was just going to say.
Right, and it's a public health expenditure.
Yaldom, can I actually ask Jameson the question?
Please.
If we allocate the money for nurses, is that binding? Do they have to use it for nurses, or because we don't have line item control, they can use it for whatever they want, technically?
Technically, they can use it for what they want. There's a precautionary measure where you can do it by a reserve. We've not had to resort to that in the past with allocations to MMPS. It's been a pretty good honor system on there, Mark.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Council Lady Henderson?
Just a quick clarification. This is allocated to the Health Department.
But they're still giving it to the schools.
Well, let's get a clarification from our Director.
I think what would happen is you would do an allocation to the Department of Health, because they actually hire the nurses, and what would have to happen is they would just have to amend their contract with schools to provide additional nurses in the school, in the schools, and the money would not actually have to go to the school board. So there would be less risk in that being allocated for something else.
Thank you. Back to Council Lady Henderson.
And I apologize, I know I was not here for the earlier MMPS portion, but my question is, as we build new schools, or schools historically, do we design a space for this school nurse? I mean, if we, you know, are new schools being built with a space that accommodates? I mean, if a nurse is going to engage with, you know, my impression now is that someone who works in the front office, you know, gives the Band-Aids and administers the medicine, and those things sort of happen in, you know, sort of a public, you know, the office space, but, you know, if you want to engage with somebody who's a medical professional, I mean, I don't know, maybe that's a counselor's room or what that is, but I don't know if the director of schools spoke to kind of the physical plant needs that correspond to these staffing requests and how those have been addressed. I apologize, I wasn't here to pose that question to him, but...
We're only building one school right now. Oh, right. Any further discussion on school nurses?
That space is in the design that I'm aware of. They always factor that in. However, you can have additional input. Again, if we feel as though that's something that needs to be expanded, or the footprint needs to be different, you can get a copy of what they traditionally do in our schools from design and construction there at the school board. But I think we need to be at the school board meeting to make that statement publicly during that three-minute comment period as council members, so that it's part of the record, and it's something that they know that we would like to have integrated in that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Back to Councilwoman Glover, and then...
Talia, the current contract with the Health Department, now, you answer this, or Tom needs to answer this. The nurses that are currently provided, where is the money coming? Are we funding that to the Health Department, and then the money goes to them? No, we're doing it through the school budget, aren't we?
Currently, it's in the school's budget, and they have a contract.
Right.
And they will pay the school board for those nurses. Is that correct?
That's, that's my understanding.
I'm just making sure. Right. So this is, that's why I said it would probably require, require some type of an amendment to that, to that contract, based on the recommendation that I have.
So now, we're not really talking about, and I'm just, I'll close with this. Now we're not talking about funding the schools. Now we're talking about giving the Health Department $913,000.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Councilman?
That was my original suggestion. That was the original suggestion.
You want to come over and ask? Fabian had a question about Health Department.
I just wanted to see you run all the way there. So, I mean, I was, I heard the school people telling us what they had in mind, but I was wondering if you can give us some more detail, because the question about the space needed for this is different if you're going to have a person that's going to talk about, in general, about health and just educate the kids on how to have healthier life choices, than if you're going to do surgery, or like, cut somebody's leg off, or whatever. So, yeah, but what is that, what is that you think they want to do? What do they need these nurses for?
Well, there's a lot of evidence that supports you get better attendance, you get a lot of, you've got a lot better outcomes, not just for the kids, but sometimes you can improve access for their families. The people get to know the nurse, they get to know the moms and the dads and so forth. There are a lot of ancillary benefits. Their attendance is a big thing for them. If a child comes to the, there's not a nurse in the school, and they go to the administrative assistant or whatever and says, "My stomach hurts," then that person is not a medical professional. They're probably going to default to saying, "You go home." And then so now, the child is out of school, you've disrupted the parents, they've got to come get them, they've got to find a place to care for them or whatever. It can be disruptive for the, a lot of different folks. So in terms of the space, even though there's not a nurse assigned to each school, there's a nurse that goes to each school at some point. So there should be, I don't know the details of all the MMPS schools, but there should be a place for the nurse to work at each school.
Do you have statistics on the schools that tend to have higher impact of health issues, contrary to schools that rarely get this problem? Or is it?
I'm sure, they keep a track, very close track of what they do.
I mean, would it make sense to prioritize this investment and just do it on the schools that have a highest impact, or do you, your professional opinion is that this should be done citywide?
Ideally, we would have a nurse in every school. This proposal is, this $900,000 is the first, is a first payment of what is proposed to be three consecutive years of increases of that size, to get us to a point where we have a nurse for every high school and one nurse for every two other schools. I think it was mentioned earlier, right now, Balak can do is the medical plans. They can't really be the school nurse, in the sense that a lot of us think of it as. And I would say that we've got, I want to say it's 62. Seven of those are dedicated solely to Harris Hillman. They're not out into the rest of the population.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Shulman?
All right. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I got confused for a second, and maybe we got an answer, maybe we didn't, but it goes back to your question about, if we were to do this, the school nurses, the money would go where? Would it go to the schools, or would it go to the Health Department, because they would be Health Department employees?
Yeah, who's going to cut the check?
Well, you guys appropriate the money. The way it works now is, it comes out of the school's budget to the Health Department to pay for the salaries and benefits of the nurses, by contract, between MMPS and the Health Department.
And I guess, Tom, the reason I asked the question is because of, some of the, I understand the overall concerns, and it goes to Council Lady Johnson's question as well, but, you know, if we give it to the schools, they can, they can do what they want to, because we're not supposed to give them line item, budgetary item. But if we were actually to give it to the Health Department to do it, then they would, it would be designated, they have to do it.
I think, and Mr. Jameson, let me just ask this question, and Talia as well. I think you opened up another can of worms now, because you've got, while they're all contracted through the Health Department, you've really got two separate issues now. You've got money that's coming from the school board, that's paying for some of the nurses, and now we're allocating $913,000 that goes straight to the Health Department. I think that in order to look at this, we want to look at it wholeheartedly, as Council Lady Johnson said. I think it's something we've got to look at next year, and if we, if it's important that those nurses be in these schools, and we as a council say the nurses, from a health standpoint, need to be in those schools, I think it's going to have to come out of their school's budget back into here, where we can allocate it to them, and we don't have that authority to do that. So, that's just my two cents.
Council Lady Weiner?
To your point, when we were in the hearings and I specifically asked them, if we were able to accommodate the school nurses and put the money in the Health Department budget, would you support that change? And the answer was yes. The reason that I made the suggestion was because we don't have line item veto, budgetary oversight on what they do in schools. To Councilwoman Bednay's point and question with regard to statistics, when I was actually researching it, and I am happy to provide that to Mr. Jameson to distribute, there are statistics out there that speak to student outcomes and overall student health and welfare when you have school nurses on board. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Yeah, Council Lady Glover?
So, I'm for school nurses, but I just, I know $70,000 is a lot of money, and RNs should get paid that much. I just keep coming back to, shouldn't we really look at trying to get some of these people who are about to graduate to come in and do some interns into our schools?
I can tell you, I don't work real closely with the school nursing program, but I can tell you that, as a general rule, the Health Department philosophy is a very collaborative kind of thing. We have, we have interns that come into clinics all the time. I don't know if there are special restrictions to go into a school setting and work with children. I don't, that would be a legal thing. There probably are. Yeah. Well, they do that.
Please, Director?
Right.
No, they do, no, and there's certain things they can't do. They'd still be working under the authority of the nurse. They can't, you can't just turn them loose in the school.
Director?
I will just briefly speak for Dr. Paul, because this, again, was one of the PIPs that came forward, and in that proposal, he said that it was really critical that these folks be able to provide some higher-level care of service, and that's the reason, because I specifically asked the questions about LPNs.
Yeah.
Because they may be able to provide similar services, but apparently, there are, you know, there could be incidents since, in a school, that LPN could not take care of. So they felt very strongly that the level of expertise required is an RN.
But, I just, if currently, Chair, I mean, apparently, there's no nurses there, and then, I mean, what's the difference between cost perspective of, I mean, yes, in an ideal world, they would all be RNs, but what would the difference be? Do we look at that between LPNs, who are licensed, and RNs?
Yes, they did that. We've got all that.
What is the...
Council Lady Johnson?
That's quite a fine question. I'm not arguing necessity of NAs or not, because we know that benefit. So my question is, by funding to Health Department, so we are changing for, for about next three years at least, changing the funding mechanism. Used to be the Nas funding, well, coming from school budget, reimbursed to Health, but now we are going to fund Health Department and directly to provide the Nas. So in other words, our Health Department is absorbing school budget, in a sense.
Yes, also, it's coming from tax dollars and going to beneficiaries through two different routes, but Director?
I would just like to add that you, if you did this, you are not really setting a precedent. If you just look at what we do for schools and Police Department, the Police Department and its budget has the entire budget for school resource officers. None of that's funded through MMPS. All of that's sitting over there in police. And another example is, school crossing guards are also funded in the Police Department and not MMPS. So if you decided to do this, and you wanted to pursue it, you're not setting a precedent.
Okay. Thank you. If we can...
Actually, I do think we would be setting a precedent, because the money for this coming year would still stay for part of the positions in the school budget, and then the other part would be coming from the council to the Health Department. So I think that, I think there does, I think there is some muddy water there. That's just my opinion, but I think there, because we're not doing the police officers that way. We're not doing the crossing guards that way.
They don't.
Okay.
I guess the question is, is that since the budget we already have includes nurse salaries that are currently in the school, how would we kind of roll them into funding through the Health Department, if we went with that? Like, if we funded this through, going through the Health Department route, we still have nurses' salaries in the MMPS budget that is through...
Right. That doesn't go away.
So it'd always stay that some of the nurses are funded through them, so we'll have two sources of funding.
But that happens throughout Metro for lots of different programs, where you have a single program that may be funded by five different particular pieces of revenue. So that's not, in the world I live in, that's not complicated.
Okay. Just, I appreciate the discussion, but being observant of people's time, the very strong third was additional funding for historic. Again, several people here, I know, have been particular sponsors for that. Again, I want to just make people aware of the results of the wish list survey that historic, is there any, any discussions? Yes, Councilman?
I know that not everyone has historic districts in your neighborhoods, in your, in your council districts, but those of us that do, the amount of staff time that is required for, to review building permits in accordance with the design guidelines, to get their changes made, so they can come before hearings, so that the historic commission can make a decision in a timely manner, is extensive. And as this council has graciously approved the creation of additional conservation overlays, as well as expansions, we have significantly added to the number of properties that may come before that board, as well as we have a significant increase just in renovation and infill activity, even within the existing district. So this council, I think, has, or past council, but the body, has seen fit to greatly expand the number of properties that are coming before that staff. And if the staff and the commission do not make a recommendation within a certain period of time, it is deemed to be approved by right, regardless of what it is. So that sort of defeats the purpose of it. So I know there's applications for two or for one. I would just urge everyone in this body to support at least the one, at least the one. I know Councilmember Colby Sledge in District 17 has done an expansion. Councilmember Anthony Davis has done some pretty large expansions in Inglewood, and so as we're looking at these investments in these communities, that's important. And another thing, too, just to go back to, is that state statistics show that historic districts and that type of districting overall increases property values, and so it is, it will, in the long run, increase property values for the city, which will also result in favorable property tax returns. And so I think the request for one staff at a minimum is well deserved.
Councilman Elrod?
Now, I would just say, they do a lot of other miscellaneous items. For instance, they, for name-changing for roads and things, they do a long, extensive, they don't just go look, okay, it was named this, they go back to when the road was built. I mean, if you just look at the, for West Do West, it's an extensive, several page.
A lot of stuff I didn't know.
Yes, and that, and they, and that takes a lot of time of going and reviewing property records, old plaits, and going through, and looking at, I'm sure, documents with gloves. So they do...
Council Lady Johnson?
I'm going to be quick. I really strongly support this funding. The reason is, because we did a general plan update called Nashville Next. Number one guiding principle is be Nashville. Be Nashville include preserving historic structure and history itself. So I think it's guiding principally, planning prospect, policy-wide. I think it is important to have good historic person with architectural background.
Councilman Davis?
I have, I have three points. First one, how many folks turned in the point sheets?
Well, quite a few. We're not going to discuss the sheet enough to have a strong statistical sense.
Okay. And the second, the second thing, though, is, you know, of course, we know my battles, you know, we've saved over five historic buildings in my district, you know, but I just hope that we remember, you know, what we're wanting to preserve, when it's time to preserve union structures like Fort Nagley and some of those concerns, you know, when we're talking about that, because, you know, just personally, now, I've saved my share of historical plantations. I'm tired of saving plantations and Confederate monuments. And I know none of you have said that, but I'm just putting that on the record, when we start looking at historic preservation in the city of Nashville, and reminding people about Nashville's history, you know what I mean? So I just want, I just want to put that out there.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Just moving on, being respectful of people's times, Audit, the $100,000 request for special funding from Audit placed fourth in people's priorities. Again, big, expanding city. I don't know that there's any more discussion with that, but I wanted people to place where that was. Actually, next came codes, which we've had a pretty vibrant discussion on codes. The question of, in fact, do you risk having a fee study, which is somewhat expensive, to raise... raise codes money beyond what the codes increase is? Councilman Glover.
I mean, I think several of us have echoed, we don't think the service level is there to justify raising any, any fees. That's my gut feeling on that, number one. Number two, I think in order to get the customer service level there to where at some point, and I'm not gonna ever support raising the fees, but if, if that was something that was even gonna be on the table, I think you need the additional staff that they've requested that was originally requested in order to accommodate, because while I think there's inequities in, with the attorneys and this and that, I guarantee you, I never get a phone call complaining about the, the DA's or, I don't get phone calls on that. I get phone calls on codes, just like each one of us in our district to get phone calls on that. So, my vote is that, that, that one needs to be done. That, that needs to be done.
You mean during...
Eight twenty-eight.
The funding of the eight twenty-eight for the codes.
So, John, on this list, there are a number of things for codes, but none of them have funds attached with them. Do we...
For sources, or you mean...
Well, they all have zero because we're sliding things from one place to another, which is adding. What, what are we saying we're supporting or not?
Well, I think it's too complicated to have a simple scenario, whereas I think the Vice Chairman's question was very important as to what do they think are their highest priorities? What does that cost? I think listening to this group indicates what their changes are the highest priorities, particularly if we're not in a changing the fee world.
Didn't they give us, and I'm recalling it on memory, maybe I'm, maybe I'm recalling it incorrectly, that they were requesting nine additional positions that had cost eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Was that not, am I remembering that correct?
That's right. Eight twenty-eight.
Eight twenty-eight, eight hundred and eighty.
Okay. Okay. But again, Chairman, again, part of that is balancing and doing what we can. Again, I'm having a sense from this group that the simple idea of raising fees to pay for some of this is probably not that good an idea, and so, that's gonna be informative going forward. Councilman.
Was it not the case that the, the fees that are currently being generated more, I mean, more sort of offset the, the cost of the staff anyway?
Will.
Was, is my memory wrong, but I have my book in front of me.
We need a fee, we need revenues.
Director Cobb just gave you, uh, told you, so Director Cobb gave you this, the net amount for the staffing was six sixty, eight hundred, and then for three vehicle purchases, which was gonna come out of four percent funds. I've got it right here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're looking at that?
It was a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. So, but, but still, it would have to be in the operational even if it's gonna come out of the four percent. So, the eight twenty-eight, eight would be the net number if all of the positions and the vehicles that are required to fill those positions were done.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Council Lady Weiner.
The only point that I want to make is while we have a twelve and a half million dollar plus surplus from this particular department, and yet we have terrible customer service because they need more help in there, the one thing that's the most alarming to me, and why I would really recommend that we look at adding more zoning examiners, is because we've got some that are getting ready in the very near future to retire. And the sooner that we get people on board in that department to be up to the task of managing this from an institutional knowledge standpoint, when these guys retire, the better off we are.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Weathers.
I would add to Sherry's point, you know, the zoning examiners, when someone brings in a site plan or a building plan, you know, we pass overlays, we pass all these codes, that's the zoning examiner that might have seven minutes to look at that plan to make sure that what's submitted actually meets the codes that we're all passing. We need to make sure that they have the staff to do that appropriately. Otherwise, not only are they, is there a greater chance that the laws that we're passing are gonna be enforced from the get-go, but, you know, that in some cases could create public safety problems.
Councilman Elrod.
Speaking of public safety problems, if Director Cobb's number one priority literally goes to the health and safety of the buildings, it's one thing to examine the zoning and making sure it's correct, it's another thing to making sure that the gas pipe is all, is corrected and the electricals could be corrected.
Electrical, electrical.
You know, it, it, what, it doesn't matter the zoning if the building blows up.
All right. Thank you for this discussion. Again, moving beyond codes and to some items that were fairly heavily ranked, but not quite at the level of these others, was Public Works. Again, this was Jeremy's wish list item that got a lot of votes, was for general countywide Public Works funding of programs that had been in Public Works's original budget, did not make it all the way through the budget process, is to try to fund the transportation and right-of-way maintenance programs that were in Mark Stotifin's budget, and that, you add those two items together, which I confirmed with them yesterday, is, of course, is a priority and a best use, that if you gave them money, this is what they would use it for, and that is up to seven hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
For, for those two areas in his budget, which is, again, crew, people and trucks doing stuff for transportation and for right-of-way maintenance. Brush collection would be an additional sixty-nine thousand dollars, for example, but this is quite a big step, having those. And again, that is countywide, that's, every district would benefit from it. It's clearly something that is needed, but again, it, it received a lot of votes in the last several days, and again, I wanted, and again, I know Jeremy put that in and his wish list item, if people would like to talk about that, yes.
He had, on the curbside recycling, imposing a fee for the second trash can, which is actually revenue as opposed to a cost.
Well, and that's our next set of bullet points, if you didn't mind.
No, we have a fee for the third.
But in terms of, of people's general priority for that, I, again, I'm trying to get a sense of the council as we go forward and try to craft something balanced. Yes, Council Lady.
Can I just inquire, I mean, I'm looking in our Public Works section, Councilman Elrod, what you added there, I see the recycling specific, but I see, I mean, other Public Works requested but unfunded. I know you're saying trucks out there doing stuff, but, I mean, have we looked at that more particularly with Public Works, given what they were funded and what they would...
Well, I did yesterday, I did not bring with me that spreadsheet between what was requested and what was funded, and these, these were two sets of items. Again, I think to them, it is somewhat fungible because you're funding crews with trucks, and if there's snow, you do snow, and if you do, you know, traffic, you do traffic, but you're out there doing that. So, I don't think that to them in conversation, that there's a hard or fast program particularly. It is a little bit lumpy in the sense of people cost what they cost, and trucks cost what they cost, but it's basically anywhere from one hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars would be useful to them in terms of having more people to say, go do stuff out into the county. And again, but I got, we have the, we have the sponsor here.
Well, I mean, part of it was, is the right-of-way was for the permits, is that is something that there's, to increase fees, there is absolutely much more room in the ceiling to increase fees. I mean, the fees, I think you could, I haven't done a study, but I would imagine you, a comparable study to sister cities, and our fees are very low, and I'm, and the development community has even said, they're, they're willing to pay higher fees if it goes to more people to help them get their permits faster and get inspections done faster. So, to me, this is an easy, something easily done. I'm gonna have some legislation next month to, to start tackling some of that, depending on how the budget goes. But I think, you know, when we went to, a few of us went to the luncheon that supported the Public Works employees, there are guys in trucks that go out and break their backs every day, moving stuff, cutting stuff down, and it doesn't get any kind of glory, but it, it helps us with our constituents, and it helps all across the county. It helped downtown here, you know, moving stuff around or downtown here during, you know, all the predator celebration. This is literally, you know, we have schools, we have safety, but we have making sure our right-of-way is taken care of, and that, to me, is an essential part of local government.
Well, and then, and then moving on a little bit to related discussion, again, are three sources of fee increase that would provide additional services that were mentioned in the council priorities. One is fire inspection, where you would have a fee increase. Another is the potential for additional recycling, which would have an additional fee, and then finally, these same permit inspections. Now, the reason I bring this up is to do any fee increase, you have to have a study to justify the fee increase. So, the question is putting study money in the wish list for specifically these three fee increases to increase those services. Council Lady.
I mean, the curbside recycling has been in Public Works for years.
This would be the second bin.
It's been the plan for years. It was supposed to happen in 2014. It is not new. We've done that study.
Okay. Well, we've done that study, so we can save the money on that study. Okay. I don't, I don't know how the study turned out, but I hope it indicated the need.
Yeah, I mean, if it was supposed to happen, there was a schedule, it just got settled.
Okay. All right. Very good. So, we would be down to two studies. If, assuming that we did not do a code study, it would be a permit inspectors and a fire inspector's study to increase the fees to provide more service in those areas. Yes, Council Lady.
What's the cost of the study, Todd?
Fifty to seventy-five thousand, somewhere around, would be my guess. That's what we've paid in the past for fee studies.
Could we get a discount if we were two at the same time?
Two-four-nine.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Just wrote seventy-five, if you want to do it.
Two-twenty-two.
I'm strong, I'm somebody, make it work.
Okay. Thank you. Now, you were all aware of other wish list items. I'm grouping these up front as to be a priority to try to find the money to pay for them and to bring this up in discussion, and any other items? Now, some things that are not particularly on here, for example, we may have heard about, and I, I see some sponsors here, but they did not get that many votes, is the state trial court's request, for example. But again, I just wanted to, sort of with the will of the group, yes, Councilman?
Can I go about my item?
Yes, you can talk about your item, too. That also just narrowly missed the top seven, though...
Well, this is the only one that is going to save people from dying, because we have people dying in Nashville every day for speeding and, and traffic accidents. And just, we had in Jacobia, that was in my district, on Blue Hole Road and Bell Road, just, we had a people's person die just last week. And so, this happens a lot outside the core of the city. People, the police is engaging in protecting us from crime, so they will put their roadblocks on high-crime areas. They won't do them on places where people are speeding necessarily. So, what I'm suggesting is that we create a dedicated traffic enforcement force that only deals with traffic enforcement, not based on crime, but based on traffic problems. And that, for example, on Hold Road where people are speeding and people can't get out of their houses, we all have those roads where people are unable to exit their home to even, they're even afraid to go get their mail because people are speeding so badly. So, what I'm suggesting, we start a pilot program, where we have, we hire a police officer and a patrol car, and we just move this person around the city to all those hard areas that we all have in our districts to try to slow down traffic, to keep people from driving on the median, people ignoring stop signs, people that are speeding through subdivisions at seventy miles an hour. And that's what I'm asking, it's a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and it will, it will be a good way to try to deal with quality of life issues.
Quick question for our director. The car would be a four percent money, so it would really just be the, the cost of a person doing that.
Yes, there would be a cost of the person, but there would be this, like, maintenance and gas and things like that.
But it would be small.
Yes. Council Lady.
I just want to say that this would be great. I get so many calls on speeding, and when I call, you know, Midtown, they will say, we get the calls, too. They're bombarded. They don't get calls saying somebody broke in the house. They get calls saying, can you please get somebody out here, they're speeding. So, this is a hot, hot issue in the entire Midtown Hills Police Precinct.
Council Lady.
Yeah, I just, I want to speak to that kind of from a safe streets perspective, and, you know, I, too, have spoken, my district goes across two precincts, and so I think, you know, kind of from a leadership perspective, I know that, you know, traffic enforcement or speeding enforcement is somewhat of a fraught issue sometimes in varying communities, but in those communities that are specifically requesting, like, I can't go to my mailbox or it's dangerous, you know, my kids can't bike to their friends' houses, or we don't have sidewalks and we just need to walk places safely. I think just the broader conversation from a leadership standpoint of how the various precincts are staffed and the tra, I mean, you know, there used to be a whole traffic enforcement force of motorcycles, and that's all they did was speeding enforcement. And then we moved to sort of a different model, and there is, you know, the, the traffic motor that is in the particular precincts now to seemingly address this issue, but they are only dealing at peak times with wrecks, right? So, they never have the time, and that's what I continue to hear, and I'm sure you all hear, we just don't have the staffing to address it. So, I think, you know, I welcome this conversation, but I wonder if, from a leadership perspective, if we really look into all the precincts about how they are organized and what we are intentionally and proactively doing around speeding enforcement, I think we have a bigger impact if we...
Handle it institutionally.
Yeah, I mean, if it's the one car that's gonna rotate around with all, I mean, I share your concern truly, and I'd love to work with you on it because I've already been having some conversations, but I wonder if maybe that's the best...
Well, I appreciate the discussion. Councilman Weathers.
I'd really have to echo a lot of Councilmember Henderson's points. Even in urban areas, we have lots of speeding issues and people blocking corners, and Gallatin Road has one of the highest levels of pedestrian fatalities from people speeding and hitting them. So, we have a lot of infrastructure needs in our county that we're slowly starting to address. We are continuing to open new police precincts, which will also help to shrink some of the coverage areas. That might help. And, and I just believe that we need to combine our, all of our forces with our Department of Transportation on infrastructure, on public education, as well as with the police force all working together. I'm not confident that one officer or one or a couple of cars would be able to cover a specific area really enough to, to make as much of a difference as we need at this point. I think we need to hang on to that and make that a priority in our conversations about infrastructure, public education, or driver and pedestrian education, as well as the police staffing for next year.
Council Lady Johnson, I know you had your...
I appreciate Councilwoman Bennet bringing this item because I can tell you it's needed. I put points on this particular item simply because one area in particular, in my area, down Castle Gate Drive, a lot of senior citizens walk on the bike lanes because of the lack of sidewalks. They want to walk in that neighborhood, but people drag race down that street and damn near run them over. Their mailboxes always knocked over along that area. We just recently had to get a special exception at the appeals level for a stop sign to hopefully, and then, stop signs are not even supposed to be used to slow people down, but in this particular case, it's gotten so bad that they don't feel safe walking in their neighborhood because of the speeding cars. And the, the Police Department, I call all the time, and they just literally don't have somebody there to do that. So, one car to me that circulates around and we have access to that is better than none.
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman Bennet.
And just from a development perspective, I can tell you that it's very hard for us council members to support the developments that are going to increase our tax base when people are saying, I don't want to see a single car anymore on the street because they are just overwhelming our capacity. So, unless we can restore confidence that people are safe using the city, they're going to continue being what we're trying to avoid, which is the NIMBY thing. If we want them to be NIMBY like the mayor says, we gotta give that quality of life to people, so, I'm sorry. This is, I promise, I'm just not going to do this every time I speak, so this is just...
I like it.
It's fine.
It, it does have an impact.
Okay. Council Lady Hearn.
With all due respect, you know, I, and I guess I'm looking at things in a more global situation here, and, and, and I know Councilwoman, we talked about, these are our children, but for us to talk about a, a police officer to, to manage traffic, when it seems to me that police officers that are already in that area can monitor this, and they just need to be, do a better job, and they need to be held accountable, when we have sick people that are not getting the health that they need, when we don't have the equipment that they need, and there, those sick people include children, they include senior citizens and everything in between. And I think we need to be thinking and working on things of a more global issue than any specific matters. With all due respect to the council people, because I know what they need to do for their districts, and I appreciate that, but I...
Okay. Thank you. Council Lady, it out.
Yeah, I'm just gonna say, I think that's three totally unrelated issues, and all of them are equally important. I think the issue that we're seeing in our area, and I think, I've heard you all loud and clear with the Black Lives Matter, what I heard, a city is there that some of the areas feel overpoliced, they're sitting on their corners, stopping people for no reasons, and what I hear from my constituents is... And what I hear from our constituents is that we do not have that same level of service. We don't have police riding down our corners that frequently, and it's because our area has been we sacrifice, we get the brand of being a high crime area, yet every time we open up a new precinct in the last three, four have been opened up to service. Many of the areas around the urban core that they're trying to keep safe for obvious reasons because we have tourists there, but it's the people in the community that are paying taxes and paying for this service, and they're not receiving it. And it's it's really hurting our ability from a business perspective out in southeast Nashville, because one of the biggest things I hear is that they're concerned about not having a presence of police officers, yet we're on the news every night because we're the bad area of town. Now, we have, in my opinion, created a bigger problem because we've gone to putting these schools inside subdivisions. And and that's a bigger issue because you want these community schools. So now we have these schools lodged in the middle of a 300-home subdivision with one way in and one way out. And our HOAs are having to hire police officers out of their HOA money that is supposed to go toward the community to patrol it. And it's not right, it's not there, and it's not equitable. And we are due a police precinct, we are, but we have, if you look at it, about 25% of the population in southeast Nashville, 134 apartment complexes out there, which are little cities within themselves. And and we do not have sufficient police officers to cover those areas. They're high dense areas, you know, most of the time there are two police cars at one particular call, and so we're splitting. Council Lady Johnson's district split between Hermitage and South. South goes all the way down to downtown to help out. So we're not getting coverage, you know, we're not getting the coverage we deserve and the coverage that we need. And 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 as far as I know, I've been promised a police precinct. I've asked for it from the first day I came in, and I've watched them build three since then in other areas. So we do need a traffic person designated and a resource for our area. This person, we understand how it needs to work. It's not a global issue, in my opinion, because, like I said, I heard you all have coverage, but it's, you know, we have an issue, we have a problem, and I do think the resource will be utilized, and it will help take out some of the expenses from the HOAs. And additionally, it's a safety issue. That may be the, I don't know, because our area is so split up, but we've had about eight people killed in the last month from hit-and-run accidents and car accidents. So it is a big issue, and we need to do something.
Thank you, Council Lady. Real quickly, Councilman Weathers.
I would suggest that until a new precinct is built, that the council members in that area, or maybe even all council members, just have a discussion with Chief Anderson and the police generally, if we feel that some areas are overstaffed and others under, that we could reallocate within the.
All right, and then we're going to move on.
Chair, can let me, so Councilman Weathers, we've already addressed that with with South Precinct. Council Lady Johnson and I, we had a public safety meeting yesterday. Council Lady Dow may want to collaborate with with Councilman Bettany for their particular area, but we're doing that out in southeast.
And we're going to stay on budget. Council Lady.
I want to say, we all had that conversation. We've done many, many ride-alongs. They don't give they don't give tickets, you know, they only give, you know, 20% tickets, so we're not even creating revenue. So there's so much involved, they don't have time to do this, so.
Okay. Real quick, like Councilman Johnson.
Quickly, I do support Councilmember Bettany's point because in my district, number one complaint I get is speeding and safety, because people speed a four-way stop. Actually, in my four-way stop, there's a bike that was hit by the car because didn't pay much attention.
Okay.
You know, police presence is really necessary to increase the safety.
Okay. I hear you loud and clear, the the need, Council Lady Johnson. Have a budget.
I want to clarify that we have had, I have been also advocating for a police precinct since the moment I was elected in this office. That's not our issue. Our issue is safety, where the schools are, and senior citizens try to get out in the neighborhood. People are drag racing down the street, and this is a very important issue in the suburban areas. We need this.
All right, we're coming up on two and a half hours, and I want to be committed to having the meeting. A final item that's pointed out is council office support, always a difficult subject. There's been a question of an IT support person or a financial analyst support person. I believe some parties in the council staff would feel that an IT support person would be of profound help to them. So that has been requested. Yes, Council Lady Weiner.
I just want to speak to the notion that we are working towards enhanced community engagement, and if we're able to bring this position onboard, it would go a long way towards not only streamlining the dashboard that we're working on that will also be accessible to our constituents, but the enhanced engagement opportunities that they'll have with us. So I strongly support that.
$80,000, $85,000 from that. All right. Well, thank you. I'm grateful to everybody being here. Council Lady.
Since I'm here, I will bring up the 50 Forward Questioning Act, and I appreciate those who allocated any points toward it, and I hope that there's that there's any questions that remain as we move forward to that, that that they get asked so that we can help help them out.
Councilman Davis.
And I don't know, and, you know, how the system, point system works, but as a minority caucus and as, you know, talking with members of the Hermitage, Donaldson, Madison area, we wanted to work, we worked together, and I went and sought where we could take funding to help in full motion and 50 Forward.
Right.
Okay. And, you know, usually, and you and I love your process, it's a great change, okay, that you've done, Chairman, but some but usually why, maybe I'm just old school, how we we've been doing it in the past is, you know, like, hey, you want to fund this area, find areas where you could cut the funds, you know? And I came prepared to say, well, we're going to cut it to fund 50 Forward and in full motion. And I don't know if, you know, some of us had to work, and we, not everybody has turned in their forms, and I'm assuming the top 10 items you found other forms of funding for.
Well, let me just spend a moment on this. If you've not submitted a source, please do. Every source that has been submitted to me, I've talked to Finance about extensively. And often people use the same sources, so it becomes difficult to match sources and uses. So going forward, hopefully tomorrow, here here are several things is with the administration's concurrence and in a joint effort with them, we will circulate a substitute, trying to fund as many of the wishlist items as as possible in a balanced way. The strategy on sources is taking everybody's suggestions and walking through that, but by and large, there are not, there are no, unless somebody shows up and tells me right now that there's a program that they want to cut, that it is not a programmatic change from the mayor's program, but it is a sharpened pencil approach where often very small amounts of money come from various things that with finances, concurrence, that it is possible to do, that it is possible to do, and then that will be the basis of the funding of this. I do hope that there will be a wishlist funding that is a multiple of what's ever happened in the in the past, but we are working together, and what will be presented will be something that the administration has signed off on for the council. Yes, Council Lady Johnson. We hope, we hope, yes.
Deadline to submit those requests and to, in order to fund this substitute.
Really was some time ago, but feel free to share it with Rosie. Okay? But but at 11 o'clock tomorrow, I feel like this, the substitute will be finalized. So it definitely 10:55 technically, I guess, but it's pretty far along. Yes, Councilman Davis.
All right. If we can go over, I've identified where and since we're all here and we're on Channel 3, where we can make the cuts from, from various areas, you know what I mean?
Okay.
You know, for 50 Forward and for, you know, in full motion.
Well, feel free to suggest your cuts.
All right.
And.
$100,000 from Second Harvest, $100,000 from, they'll be still getting the increase. $100,000 from the Adventure Science Museum. Hey, I'm at priorities. I mean, you got, you know, we try to service the seniors and the youth in the community. We talk about it, but it, you know, I mean, I'm.
The Second Harvest is where we feed.
Come on, Councilman, I saw the $200,000.
Okay. All right, that's, that's now we're now we're looking at 50 for 50 Forward. That's where I was doing the $200,000 for for in full motion. Now, it was what, 250 or was it 200? It was 250 for 50 Forward. 200 for 50 Forward?
No, 250 for in full motion and 250 for 50 Forward.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. $50,000 from the seed program.
The seed program?
Yes.
The what? It's a jump starter for.
And and some of the stuff, I did talk to Mr. Reblin about, he didn't, you know, I mean, not trying to put him on Front Street, all right? But, you know, the we funded the seed program last year. I'm not for sure, but it's in there again. And and for my regulation, I could be wrong, we were always supposed to fund that once. So 50 grand from the seed program.
I need 150 more.
Here we go, here I come. I didn't say it was going to be, it's going to be fun.
Okay.
You know what I mean? I took 25, even, I love this place, from Civic Designs Center.
Oh, no.
And please turn it in, but but as we, as we wrap up here, I have another thought for everybody that I need your help on. So we had the budget process last year, we've had this process this year. It is not perfect, obviously, and how we want to do this.
He's not done, Chair.
Come on, he's not done. Let's hear it. Let's hear it.
Okay. Well, you you can feel free to write them down and give them to Rosie as everybody else did.
All right. And and 200, 200, and the, well, $200,000 from the Titans improvements.
Okay.
We can't take anything out of that. You can't touch that. Yeah, we can't.
All these are noted, Council?
All right, what about, okay, I had a, I wasn't sure about that.
When is the deadline to submit amendments to the budget? And then after that point, those amendments would be, will be late filed or require suspension.
I defer to council.
So you can amend on Thursday, but any amendment has to have been considered by the Budget Finance Committee in that last meeting as much.
So tomorrow.
So the the Monday meeting next, this coming Monday, the amendment has to be considered by the Budget Committee meeting on Monday, so when is the deadline to get just?
Noon tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Noon tomorrow.
Noon tomorrow.
I do have a question about this, this was the $1 million that we have to get in Nashville, right? This curb music, Vayner gave it.
Yes.
We are, we had, we had this, some of that.
But again, Councilman, feel free to write all these down and give them to me. In every case, I tell you, I promise you, we have been working with Finance closely to see what's available and what's not available. But as we wrap up, and I know Council Lady Weiner is here, think of the improvements that you want in this process for next year.
I got a procedural question.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Jameson, all right, how many votes do we need to amend it on the floor? If I were to do an amendment, taking funds from certain areas for those two programs, I will, 27 votes get me what I need. 21? Okay.
Okay. And with that, I'm grateful to everybody's being here. I want to thank the director and and let's declare this meeting, the Budget Finance Committee, to be adjourned until Monday.
Didn't touch the 4,000? I didn't touch the.
Thank you.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information about this and other programs, visit Nashville.gov.